My drunk fell during the fall.
I'm so sorry.
Couldn't, I couldn't move on. I'm worried I couldn't move on.
Is there anything to drink from me?
No, I went to the hospital.
I know, it's like so sorry. Wait, is it back then?
I was wanting to make sure that this doesn't get out of order. No, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't mean that. I just wanted to make sure that it broke.
Yikes. So you call a parking lot?
Didn't have that in mind. That's my second time being at that kind of a place.
Is there a rabbit?
This one was even right around us. Well, actually, the last two jobs were so unexpected. It was seventeen. I'm so expected to be in my hair and skirt side. It was, yeah. It won't be that, it won't be that easy today, unfortunately.
You don't think so?
Sometimes, yeah, it is.
I'm not, I'm a jerk. I feel happy for him.
But I think it's gonna be that easy. I'm lucky to be.
Yeah. Who else is on our side?
I know what it's probably not on, but it's the product which, instead of which kind of they usually have, it doesn't stop. But not on.
Have you been playing the role, not tracing through everything?
If you get a question or a comment, that's why, that's why.
We have like, I thought we had like six players that should come to Saturday morning.
And of course, when the girl comes, that's where all things go.
From both Fridays.
Yeah, but the quarterback would, as I say, see, it's, yeah, too tough up there. And who suffered a previous, a little worse than that, didn't go as he can typically, but less than eventually had that end.
Oh, my gosh.
She gets a couple of hurt, that's why she goes up there. It depends on the contract.
Good evening. Welcome to the West Ocean Township Board of Supervisors meeting, February seventh, twenty twenty-three. To start the meeting, will you please stand and join me in the pleasurable evening?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to your republic, for Richard Sanders, on the nation, under our individual liberty and justice law.
Thank you. Please be aware this meeting is being livestreamed on the Township YouTube channel, and the meeting may be audio or video recorded by people present in the room. First up is item three on the agenda, which is the opportunity for public comment. Is anyone wanting to raise an issue that is not on the agenda tonight, or who has a question or comment to ask the board or staff? Very good, well, we move on to agenda item number four, which is discussion on possible approval of a waiver of land development for eight-one-three West Chester Pike RPMC Services LLC. Constructed twelve by twenty-four for the garage on the property. And I think Brian, Chris is gonna kick us off on this one.
Hi, this is Mr. Chairman. So before the board this evening is a request for a waiver of land development for thirteen West Chester Pike. This property previously applied to the zoning hearing board for relief for dimensional variance from the following sections, eighty-four twenty-two F and eighty-four twenty-two G, which are pertaining to building setback and side yard setback requirements respectively. Hearing this hall on August twenty-second, the relief was granted. Did provide a copy of the order from the zoning hearing board dated October fourth to the board. So the proposal is to construct a twelve-by-twenty-four garage on the site, which would be approximately, which would be two hundred eighty-eight square feet. Plans that were presented to the zoning hearing board are on display this evening. The property owner has requested a waiver of land development due to the size of the project. I did review this matter with township engineer, who believes that a waiver of land development would be appropriate in this instance. He did note that the new garage would be smaller than what currently exists on the site, which will result in a reduction in building coverage on the lot. Please be advised that stormwater management will not be required since the project is under five hundred square feet, and I believe a representative from the property owner is here this evening. So that pretty much sums up the requests that is before the board this evening.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Does the board have any comments or questions for Brian or Chris or the representative?
Let me just have one question, Brian, maybe you can weigh in on this. Do you have any idea what the estimated cost would be for a land development application for a project of this size? I mean, it's a very small thing we're talking about, but what kind of money we're talking about? Estimation?
Ten, fifteen thousand dollars.
Really, just for the application?
Just for all the work to be done for the review, for going through the different stages of review, for the contract for the applicant to put, pay for the plans, recording, legal fees.
Yes. Which is about the cost of the project itself, maybe.
Probably, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I will, I will note that the applicant did pay the required fees for questioning waiver of land development.
Any other comments or questions from the board? I have one, Brian. So obviously, it's a new building, I know there's other buildings that are coming down. Like rainwater that hits this building, is it gonna be, you know, channeled down into existing stormwater drains, that intention?
So what I have in front of you right now on the screen is the proposed demolition plan. And on that plan, they're proposing to remove a shed, a garden, a flagstone paving area, another shed, and a garage. Those together total five hundred eighty-eight square feet, plus some paving. The proposed conditions look like this. They're proposing to put a garage over the rear portion of the property where the shed and the garden and that patio were. They're moving the shed and the edge of paving here, it's a new black line, further from the parking lot from the adjacent property. And all these areas propose a drain to the existing inlet that's inside the parking area now.
Will it be gutters in the, you know, couch panel in this garage, or is it just gonna be?
Doesn't need to be a heater. If, if they want to, they can, they can just let it go right here on the corner. Bring it out to the front, they're going value, but there's no plans, since this is below five hundred square feet, I wouldn't be sorry about that.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, I'll make the motion to grant the request.
Thank you, John. Is there a second to the motion, which is to approve the request to waive land development for eight-one-three West Chester Pike? For a second, thank you, Ashley. Got a motion in a second, is there any final board comment or questions? Any public comment or questions? Doug?
What is happening is this one, I should ask your question?
It's opposite green drop on between West Chester Pike and Paoli Pike.
Green drop?
Yeah, with that, you know.
Right, right near the hardware store?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So is there, are any trees gonna be removed here, or is there gonna be replants or anything? No?
Any other public comments or questions? Very good, we're ready to take the vote, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Motion passes four zero, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is item number five, discussion on possible approval of a request for a waiver from section seventy-one thirteen T and seventy-one twenty-three B, the West Ocean Township Stormwater Ordinance for eight-one-five Paoli Pike Perfect Self Storage. Brian?
Yes, so in front of you tonight is a request from the applicant to waive the two sections of the ordinance, stormwater ordinance requiring the buffering of existing. So the area in question is the shade area here at the back of the site. You recall, this property did obtain a portion, which is the upper portion right here from the Stanbury property. That is now going to be combined with theirs to remain as green space, it's restricted from development. There is a flood plain, and then there is also waters at the Commonwealth, I believe, on the back property here, which requires a buffer. Currently, that buffer has, is disturbed, it's got stone, it's got disturbance in it, it's not natural. They're proposing to establish the rear of the property, as you see here, with a buffer, I believe it's fifty feet from the property line, and the applicant and the engineers here discuss that further. They're showing here, this area, this is gonna be constructed as a vegetated buffer to our standards. And they're here to, because the, the project will be within the, I believe, a hundred feet, that, that's why they're here to request a waiver on those two sections. And I'll turn it over to the applicant and his counsel. As dear as you have any more technical comments regarding.
Why would we request the waiver? What's the advantage to not do stormwater on that portion of the property?
Oh, it's not for stormwater, it's to allow the disturbance within the hundred-foot repairing buffer. There's not, there's no waiver from stormwater. The waiver itself is strictly to allow them to do the project, as you see on, they're still gonna have to require to do stormwater for the ordinance. All this is doing is to allow them, if they don't get the waiver, they can't build the project.
And just for clarification, this is a waiver from the Township Stormwater Ordinance, chapter seventy-one. Why isn't this going before the zoning hearing board, rather than?
The zoning hearing board only can grant variances from zoning hearing, zoning ordinance sections. The stormwater ordinance has, just like the subdivision ordinance, where you, the board supervisors have the legal authority to grant waivers. In your stormwater ordinance, the board supervisors is the body that can grant waivers.
For the stormwater.
For stormwater, yeah.
For that, and not for the zoning ordinance per se, just for stormwater.
Yeah.
So they're, they're here seeking relief from two sections of the ordinance regarding the setback requirements or buffering requirements.
So your, the county model ordinance did not require, you're not mandated to have these provisions in there, but when you adopted your stormwater ordinance, you established repairing buffer requirements? I'm assuming that it's a hundred feet off the bank, that you can't do this disturbance?
Hundred feet from the top of the bank, construction or disturbance is not allowed, and also one hundred, one hundred feet from your, one hundred year flood plain. Twenty-five feet or one hundred, whichever, whichever is greater. Our flood, our hundred-year flood plain is only, is less than twenty-five feet away, so the hundred feet goes according to the ordinance.
Can you show us on this, where the encroachment is into that?
Yeah, well, he's in there here, first half apartment, he's trying to see. So this line right here is your hundred-foot setback from the, from back there. I'm showing you, so this portion of the building would be roughly in, is what is in within that hundred-foot setback from the top of the bank. Now, the, the hundred feet is measured from the bank, and the bank is on the property behind that, it's not only on the property.
And so that fifty feet then to the left where they're proposing putting the buffer is already covered in stone?
It's, it's got some stone, yes, it's, it's already disturbed. They're proposing to reestablish it as a vegetated buffer.
It says in the, the note from the design company, there's already a shed on there too, is that correct, or is the shed actually?
Yeah, so you can see here, where you see this dash line, this dash line you see is stone already. This is where the stone is. I'm not sure on this plan where the shed is located.
The shed is right, right there.
There is the shed.
And that's right at the hundred foot, about over there.
So despite the encroachment, it would actually probably?
They're making it a lot better.
Yeah.
Just remind me that the parcel that was acquired previously, there, there's an easement on that, or what is the conservation said it's not to be developed? What was the?
I was gonna ask that same question, Brian, you indicated that that parcel is de-restricted from any use, where is that?
It's not de-restricted, yeah.
It's not de-restricted, however, we have no intention, there's no planned development there, the only thing it could be used for is possibly stormwater management for the new, the expanded building. And any, and we would extend the repairing buffer restoration into that lot as well. That's the only thing we would do is, is reestablish repairing.
Yeah, so would it make sense to do that as one project now and really help this part of the creek?
Yeah, from the stormwater standpoint.
Absolutely, I mean, I, I kind of was just showing, this was just added on, it's already, it's already, it already has its own buffer for wetlands, which, this is a wetland buffer over here, so that's not allowed to be touched anyway. The only place possibly that we would touch it would be for stormwater management in this area.
We do that nails part of the project?
Absolutely, we could, we could do repairing buffer restoration there as well.
Just so the boards are aware, they haven't submitted any plans yet for the development. This is prior to submitting plans, so if they don't get this waiver, they have to rethink their project.
Their, their approval of the waiver could be conditioned on them agreeing to do the repairing buffer on that.
Can we do stormwater management, yeah.
I'm Brian, in fact, an applicant, and I built this facility about twelve years ago. And the reason we have three footprints of equal size and then a smaller one here is because back then, there was a twenty-five foot buffer required. And we maxed out our impervious coverage and, and building coverage, based on what we had. But Stanbury built next door, had the opportunity to acquire this piece with the intention of just balancing out my numbers so I can get a full-size building back here. And then we found out that twenty-five feet went to a hundred feet, so that's why basically we're here. Over here in this, I mean, this is about fifteen thousand feet, ten of which is already either too wet or too close to the stream or out of the picture. And it turns out that about five thousand feet is to the south is the best ground that we were thinking of. If we do get permission, we build, you know, building of this size and put maybe the stormwater management. Closer you get to the creek, the less thirsty the, the ground is, so any stormwater management really doesn't work as well. Up here is good soil, we have it perfect yet, but based on the vegetation, looks really good. We're thinking of doing some, maybe a couple of twin thirty-six inch perforated pipes in stone, and then just re-vegetate it. And we could kind of run this, I was in there today looking around, and there's a lot of crap back in there, we gotta get cleaned up, but we could run this buffer up a little bit more too, just to kind of set shit off.
Because it's somewhat protected land, will we be able to enter that property with paving in?
No.
On the first stormwater management?
Paving, did you say?
No, paving, pipe.
Paving? Yeah, yeah, what there is right, I'm sorry, I thought you said paving.
Brian, so anything, the area, this is the area right here that they can put the stormwater management into?
Yeah, but what makes the most sense is, is up in here, there's some mature trees down here, I don't wanna play with. There's one dead one in the corner here that has to come out, there's a couple of smaller with nothing, other than this one big one, one or two big ones, which are dead already. There's maybe half a dozen other trees that are eight inches or smaller in caliber. What I, when there's a fence coming down here right now, and it goes across here behind the cell tower. We're gonna remove that fence so they can get in to do, if, if the engineer decides that's where, you know, we have to create additional stormwater management because we're expanding the footprint. I think you said with the paving about seven thousand feet, then it would most likely make sense to put it in this section here, sleeved in behind the existing fence and in front of the vegetation we don't have to mess with. And so happens that that works well because that's where the ground's a little higher and should perk better. So we're hoping it'll work. Doesn't work, then it crashes and burns on its own, even with the waiver.
Mr. Chairman, I noticed that you building seems to have a larger footprint than the three existing ones, is there a reason for that?
Yes, we're trying to get a little bit more in, if I had to do over, I probably, I think our maximum height was thirty-five feet. Average around it is in your ordinance, where we could have put three stories on all three of these buildings if we wanted to. The reason I didn't do a two-story building back here is because the footprint was too small, we were limited. But now, since we've acquired that piece, I think we have the opportunity for your approval to ask for a waiver, hopefully obtain it, and then move into land development. We're not asking for any relief from any, we gotta go through all the gyrations and plans and calculations and PEP approvals as well, so it'll take a couple of years. But that's what I have in front of me.
Any other questions from the board?
Excuse me, Tina, were you talking about township piping or private stormwater?
Private stormwater, is that what's gonna be going there?
Yes.
Just by the opportunity, any public comments on this proposal? Doug, you have a question?
You have a structure that's shaded, that's going to be a new structure, is there a structure there already that's part of your storage facility?
Yes.
Yes, and the reason we can't see it is the same reason I'm standing two feet from it, because it's basically an existing building. It's about forty percent of the new footprint is existing. Then there's stone coming around the back, and somebody asked a question about this shed, it's not a shed, it's a, it's a salt bin, and that will be removed. There's not gonna be any crap around the back, this will all be vegetated. And, you know, we're gonna move that fence up over to come down along Stanbury, and probably along the back, just to keep people from coming in and playing around. We also operate a facility too.
Excuse me, Brian?
Yes.
If the waiver is granted to allow that project to happen, is there any downside to this environmentally or from a stormwater viewpoint?
The current condition, this will, the proposal to allow this is also caveated with they're going to be preparing a, a buffer, doing a vegetated buffer, which doesn't exist. Anytime you can buffer next to waters or a wetland, it is a positive impact on the waters and the weather.
So would that offset, would, would that be an equal making up for the waiver of the hundred feet?
Yes. That's the idea, is to mitigate the hundred feet by creating the repairing buffer. If you go a hundred feet, you can just leave it sit as is, you don't have to touch it, and then whatever's there is there. So currently, there's stone, it's not, it's not in a, in a state that is providing a benefit to the water source. By doing this, we're providing, we're improving the conditions for water source.
So in your opinion, allowing this to happen, there would be no downside?
Let's rephrase it a different way, if by improve, you can improve the property with an additional building in the sense of the tax base, and in addition to that, the existing problem is, there's no real control of stormwater runoff back through the end of that property. And you heard, you heard Mr. Chairman describe it, so whether the property is improved, there will, this repairing buffer much will slow and mitigate some of that water and improve what actually gets through into the creek, so. That seems reasonable from that aspect.
Okay, so there's one other issue, and this is a kind of a larger conversation that we haven't really, I think, discussed yet, but there had been talk, and a resident was here just a couple of weeks ago, asking about possible access to the shopping center, sort of through that west. Right, so this is to the west of the Aldi?
No, this is east.
This is east of the Aldi?
Of where? No, it's west.
It's the west.
This is the west.
Aldi's over here, you know, top, Scott, with that pointer.
I mean, it's right there.
No, the cells, that's the shopping center district, that's the zoning, here is that cell tower. Up here is the Aldi property, yeah, up there is the Aldi property, and no, there's not gonna be any access getting through there or anywhere else.
Are you thinking about the access through the front turn to the back?
No, to something else.
Any other questions or comments from either the public or the board? Okay, is a board member that would like to make a motion to approve the request for a waiver from section seventy-one thirteen T and seventy-one twenty-three B of the West Ocean Township Stormwater Ordinance? And so is there any conditional requirements you'd make on that?
I don't like that, for sure.
What, what condition requirement, you want a conditional requirement that there's an improvement for stormwater management on the recently acquired pass, whatever that was just described as?
Yes.
Very good, so that's the motion, is there a second?
Well, hold on, can I just clarify, is it stormwater management, or is it extending the repairing buffer on the parcel they just acquired from Stanbury?
It's actually be both.
Well, I, I heard it was still TB today, right?
The, the stormwater design is not.
Yeah, they don't have a sure life.
If they test that lot, they can't do it there, they may not do something around the buildings that on the lot they want.
Yeah, I wouldn't be specific where, just that it be done, performed.
Stormwater management.
Sure, but if it be performed, it's part of the conditional.
Yes, okay.
Well, they have to do stormwater management anyways, part of your subdivision, they're not asking to be waived for the requirement to do stormwater management. This waiver is just limited to the encroachment into the hundred-foot buffer. So for this waiver, would your, would your condition be that they extend the repairing buffer that they're proposing further up onto the lot that's part of the standard?
Exactly, yes, exactly, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Sure.
Okay, so a second, and Tina's made that motion, a second? Actually, a second motion, so is there, any final board comments or question on the motion? Any public comment or questions on the motion? Okay, we're ready to take the vote, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Don't have a question.
Did you have a question?
Well, just a, just a quick comment, there's actually, the existing conditions over here, they have very good stormwater management, I actually had a, a locker over there, and it's, they handle the stormwater very well in that particular place.
Good.
So, so it's just a comment, but it's, everything, it has these huge grates, and everything goes in, and it's handled very well in that particular facility.
Hear that, Brian?
Should I say it out loud?
Keep going.
Thank you, David.
It was well designed.
Thank you.
They needed that beginning of the discussion.
Is there any other public comment before we take the vote on the motion? Very good, we're ready to take the vote, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes four zero, thank you.
Thank you, great consideration.
Okay, next on the agenda is item number six, which is discussion on possible approval of a bench donation in West Ocean Community Park from the West Ocean Lions Club. So Chris, you wrote a memo to the board describing this, would you mind just highlighting that?
Hi, this is Mr. Chairman. So before the board this evening is consideration of accepting the donation of a bench in West Ocean Community Park from the West Ocean Lions Club. Lions Club's mission is to support the blind and visually handicapped. The bench will include a plaque commemorating the fifty-year anniversary of the club in West Ocean Township. This request was reviewed by the Park and Recreation Board, they're meeting on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, and they voted to recommend acceptance of the donation. Robert Schrattan from the West Ocean Lions Club has communicated with Dorian McLune, our park superintendent, regarding the specifications of the bench, and the information before the board will meet those specifications. I also provided additional details on the donation request, on the donation that is before the board this evening.
Thank you, Chris. So the bench is a standard design we already have, or?
It is one of three designs that have been utilized, and they selected this one.
Can I just see the plaque with the old bench somewhere?
That's correct. And then they provided some model language that would be included on the plaque.
Awesome. Any board questions or comments on this kind of offer of donation?
I, I just wanna commend, for the record, the Lions Club, when its history, and it's a history of inclusion and diversity within our community, and its support that's given to the community over the years since its inception, nineteen seventy-two, so my head's up to you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much on behalf of the board, you know, it's great to have these items on the agenda, we appreciate you wanting to buy us a bench for one of our parks.
I believe the location has been looked at, Dorian, or am I incorrect?
We've looked at a couple of locations, it's not exact yet, it's likely the, the center walkway that goes past the playground, and then up past the amphitheater, because there's a little bit of elbow in there. That seems to be the, the best place, but it hasn't been completely decided. That seems to be the best place, but it hasn't been completely decided.
Well, we are planning to vote for the improvements to the community park with the extension of the bathroom, potential splash pad, we just want to make sure it's a good location where it's likely to be moved again.
And she and I did talk about that, as a possibility.
And Bob, you have any idea when the delivery and installation would be happening on the bench?
We haven't ordered anything yet. Wanted to make sure that it was going to pass. What they had told us is eight to sixteen weeks, so really, I can't really tell you.
Okay. Were you going to plan a little celebration, dedication celebration, something like that, right, when you decide to receive it?
Yep. We'll invite all of you.
Really, very good.
Okay, so at this point, looking for a motion from the board to approve the acceptance of the bench donation.
I'm making a motion.
Thank you, John. I will second the motion. Is there any board or public comments on the motion? Thank you. Thank you to you.
Thank you.
For your leaders of dedication to the West Goshen Lions Club. All right, we're ready to take the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Motion passes four zero. Congratulations, it's like a fifty years of Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is item number seven, discussion of possible approval of ordinance number three, 2023, authorizing the volunteer fire companies operating within West Goshen Township to seek reimbursement for hazardous abatement incidents and environmental incidents in fire safety and rescue responses. Chris?
So this is an ordinance which needed to be advertised, to be advertised in the Daily Local on January thirtieth, and we also sent a copy of the ordinance for public inspection to the law library and to the Daily Local. You discussed this ordinance at your meeting on January seventeenth, and what it does is, under the authority of the Second Class Township Code, you are authorizing fire companies within the township who incur certain costs for emergency response involving hazardous material abatement, personnel hours to handle hazardous material, environmental issues, fire safety and rescue incident. You are authorizing the fire companies to seek reimbursement from the insurance companies for these costs. Your ordinance is limited to seeking reimbursement from the insurance companies. The township will have no involvement in the recovery or the request for the recovery of the funds. This is also something the fire companies must do. They can hire a third-party billing agent if they'd like to do that. You do have to authorize and approve in a subsequent resolution the basically scheduled fees that they'll be seeking reimbursement for.
And I just wanted to mention, we did discuss this in our next coalition meeting as far as the costs, they were all going to get back to their insurance companies, so we can attach it to the resolution, and then get back to Chris with his cost, and then fully date, is it at the end of the year?
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to mention that we discussed this at our next coalition meeting with the EMS Empire, and we asked them to have their costs, go to their insurance companies and have their cost available to Chris by our next meeting, which is the end of February, so that we can attach their cost to the resolution.
Well, the cost would actually, the billing rates would actually come from whatever the billing company is that they would utilize, and I know our fire marshal was reaching out to the company that she utilizes with, or the fire company she works with, just to provide us with an example. So I'll reach out to the different providers and see what that stands.
There was like Newland Township and Trifan, and having?
It was Newtown Township in Delaware County and Trifan Township. There are a few others that have used by resolution, but Newtown was the one who provided me the most detail I inquired with them, and they did not seem any issues whatsoever. Just relay the message.
So I'm still not quite clear on how the rates get set. Each of the individual companies is going to a different billing company and come up with a different rate sheet?
From what I understand, it's based on, it's basically like a general schedule based on territory.
Meaning the Chesapeake County area? Okay, so we're going to approve it one standard rate sheet at the end.
It's not going to be consistent.
It isn't going to be?
No.
It's definitely the billing company and the location. But I, but I would imagine, I don't want to speak for any of the providers, but I would imagine they're going to reach out to another individual who utilizes this type of service and probably use the same company.
Can I ask a question? Why is the board, what is your concern about what the rate is? If the fire company?
I just want consistency. I just, I want to have a resident know if something happened to West Goshen Township, this is a billable incident, that insurance company that, you know.
Right, but it's going to depend upon that fire company's, their cost, right?
Well, the costs are for materials, et cetera, et cetera, right, so. I mean, one of the things we're trying to do is, my understanding, part of the coalition is look for efficiency and some standardization and common ways of doing things and simple processes and not have constantly different things going on. We can avoid it. So here's a new thing we're instituting, so to me, it makes sense to say, as a coalition, can we come up with a way you want to manage this, that's standard between the companies, and a rate sheet that's similar that we're approving? Why?
I thought you were going to, we can according to Andrea.
We can.
We can.
Why couldn't we not do that?
Because it's not going to be the billing company's.
It's a private industry that you couldn't, the township doesn't have the authority or regulate.
The billing company.
The billing company that the fire company hires to collect and recover these costs.
And there was one.
So they're in control of deciding what gets built for the insurance company?
Yes.
Yes.
That's correct. Whether we like it or not.
The expenses are incurred by the fire company.
Correct.
They know what their expenses are, and then this third-party middleman decides what gets built to insurance.
Just like your insurance, when you go to your medical, they decide how to pay you or pay.
Well, why can't we arrange where the fire company decides what the costs are, and the billing company has the associated collecting of those costs?
It probably changes based on certain variables, how much the billing company should be charging.
Yeah, and territory.
Can I only ask of you?
I'm one of this fire, this is a fire teacher in Westchester. So I don't know much about this, this is Chief Palma's been handling this, but.
Tell them your name, it could be a minute.
Like the mayor.
Thanks, Mike.
So it's a standard rate that many companies use just to reimburse for products that we use, and if we have to bring in a third-party company to do a cleanup. So it's a standard rate that most companies are using in the area, we just don't have that yet to provide to say here the rates are, but we will.
But the rates will vary.
They will probably vary, yeah.
So vary between, with just a fire company, it will be different rates than Gozian Fire.
I can't speak for Goshen, but most, you know, we will most likely consult with them on what our rates are going to be, but I can't.
I think that's what we're trying to avoid, is having the eastern half of West Goshen Township paying one rate, and the western half paying another rate. That's something we can discuss at the coalition, we try to come up with.
I mean, we can't do anything to get a rate, right? We can't, we're not, we're not going to start this process until this board agrees these rates, whether it's one rate sheet or two rate sheets, whatever.
Yep.
So we have time to figure it out.
Yep, we have some time, we're in the process of putting those rates together to make sure they're in line with other municipalities that are doing this.
Well, is the thought, though, that you're going to routinely have to update this resolution, because those rates are going to be updated as costs increase, right? So is this like a manual review?
This has to do with broken equipment, and, so like the metallurgical fire, for example, okay? We gave up a lot of hose there because it became contaminated gear, so there was a certain bill that I believe Steve sent to the insurance company that covered all that stuff, okay, for replacement. I mean, if you go to a homeowner's call, and we don't typically break stuff, okay, then there's not going to be.
It's self-subsided on large costs that we are up conceding, that we incur. Generally speaking, we, you know, if we lose some small piece of equipment, we just absorb those costs, but it's the bigger events that, you know, if we lose a lot of equipment, that's something that we're looking at, just see some.
I mean, I think the board previously discussed this, and we're all on board with the concept the last time, and we're just looking to try to keep it as simple and as standard as possible, knowing that there's two fire companies operating with the service of the township.
Yep. I'll bring in the chief of, you know, it would be, that's why everybody's interested, consult with Goshen.
I think for tonight, we're looking at the ordinance only, so is there any questions on the ordinance? Has anything changed since we last talked today? I don't believe so, so.
Only the updates that the board had requested, a couple of minor changes. And then the research I did to with Curdeferne and Newtown Township.
Yeah, the changes were into the last sentence, these rates shall be approved for resolution of the board's supervisors and be kept on prior to township building.
And if these are, I think, and if these are costs that change, you know, and usually as costs increase, it could probably just be included in our organizational view of resolution schedule.
Sounds good. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number three, 2023, authorizing the volunteer fire companies operating within West Goshen to seek reimbursement for hazardous abatement incidents, environmental incidents, and fire safety and rescue responses. Is there a second?
One second.
Any public comments or questions about the motion? Very good, ready to take the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? During now, the motion passes four zero. Thank you. Next is agenda item number eight, discussion of possible certification of qualifying volunteers for the West Goshen Township's Volunteer Service Tax Credit Program pursuant to ordinance number one, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, before the board this evening is potential certification of qualifying volunteers for the Township's Volunteer Service Tax Credit Program pursuant to section seventy-four fifty-eight of ordinance number one dash twenty-three. The board must serve by all qualifying volunteers by March first of each year. Documentation was provided by each of the entities servicing West Goshen Township. They all submitted their notarized lists before the January fifteenth deadline specified in the ordinance. I did review the documentation submitted and come at the lists, and supporting documentations are in order pursuant to the requirements of the ordinance and resolution number seven, 2023. I will admit the following, per the board's consideration as you review this. The total number of volunteers reflected on the list submitted is qualifications twenty-seven. Chief Palma from the Westchester Fire Department did contact me on January twenty-fourth noting that a member who met the qualifications didn't submit their verification form until after the January fifteen deadline, that has been provided to the board. They are now reflected on the notarized list submitted by Chief Palma. Since this is outside the deadline specified by the ordinance, the determination as to whether or not to add them is at the discretion of the board. Charles Burgen from Good Fellowship Ambulance Company did inform me that one member, Edward Cowan, I believe I'm pronouncing his name correctly, is no longer interested in pursuing the earned income tax credit. Additionally, he did provide documentation for administrative per individual, their secretary, Josephine Lupo, who went qualified under the ordinance. I read the documentation, which included about minutes in the schedule from their website, and this does meet the requirements for administrative personnel participation. Analyzing the cost to the township, we did factor in fifty-six thousand dollars in the 2023 budget for this program, and based on the information, the range in terms of financial impact would be between twenty-three thousand and twenty-four thousand dollars and change, depending on, depending on the payments for the real estate tax portion. The earned income tax portion would be thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. And the numbers for the real estate tax portion in terms of cost were based on a review of the actual assessed values of those properties by the township's tax rate, depending on the time of year in which they may pay.
Thanks, Chris.
We make a motion separately on each of those.
Well, the first question is, the first question I would have for the board is, the one individual, William Gale, who submitted his information afterwards, does the board wish to accept him as part of the program, recognizing that this was the first year that this was being implemented?
Yes, I think that's appropriate. There was any, so looking at the numbers, it's sixteen including Mr. Gale for Westchester Fire Department, nine from Goshen Fire, and if the individual, there's no point of considering for the EIT, only, it would only be two with relative ambulances, so total is four twenty-seven.
That's correct.
With addition of Mr. Gale and removal of Mr. Cowan.
What I would recommend just for the township's documentation is that we have good fellowship, and Westchester Fire Department just submit updated lists, and it's all accurate, reflecting whatever determination is made about the ordinance.
Thank you.
Do you have to do the revision?
Yes.
Is there any other questions or comments from the board?
I'll make the motion to accept this.
So Johnny, I make the motion to accept the qualifying list of volunteers for West Goshen Township, including Mr. Gale for Westchester Fire Department and.
And the pollution of Mr. Cowan.
The pollution of Mr. Cowan.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Tina.
And since we have Steve and Mike here tonight, so under the ordinance, once this is done, I'll send a letter to Chief Palma, and you have to send notification to everybody within ten days of the board's determination, alerting them that they're eligible.
Any public comments or questions on the motion? You?
Just for clarification, how is this going to be executed now for the real estate? They have to pay the real estate bill, is that correct?
That's correct, and then we will issue, we will issue them a refund later, later in the year, once they make payment. So real estate tax bills go out around March first, so once they make payment, depending on when, the resolution doesn't specify if they make it during the discount phase or penalty periods, whenever they make payment, that's when they would get reimbursed.
Okay, how about for their earned income?
The earned income tax credit, what I will have to do is I will have to contact individuals obtained social security numbers in October. I will upload that info, then between October and December, I'll upload that information through KeySense KeyTrack program, so that builds their database. I've already sent them a copy of our ordinance and our resolution, so they know what the tax credit value is, and when they file their local earned income tax returns in the first quarter and a half of 2024, they'll get a credit on their earned income tax towards that. So if your earned income tax payment throughout the year is a thousand dollars, you'll get a credit of five hundred dollars towards that.
Okay, so you'll send an email out to the chiefs, knowing that they have to notify the applicants within ten days, because our coalition won't get to him until the end of March.
That's correct. And the ordinance, the ordinance says that they have to notify all eligible, all qualifying volunteers accepted by the board within ten days of acceptance.
Okay, as long as you're notified.
Okay, is there any comments or questions? Very good, we'll take the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? During now, the motion passes four zero. Thanks.
I want to thank Steve and Mike, thank you for your diligence in the area of storms.
Okay, next on the agenda is item number nine, which is discussion of possible approval of a proposed Arbor Day project from the Sustainability Advisory Committee for Hamlet Crest Park. Chris?
Give me one second, I skipped a pass there by accident. Mr. Chairman, before the board this evening is a proposed Arbor Day project from the Sustainability Advisory Committee for Hamlet Crest Park. Mr. Kolkowski has put up on the screen the location of the project. Essentially, the project would involve a planting of approximately a hundred and twenty trees in the open area that's outlined in blue in the park. There would also be a buffer between some of the properties, there would provide some separation. By way of background information, the board did discuss a previous proposal of a similar type in Barter Park, however, due to a variety of concerns, members of the township's staff, the Sustainability Advisory Committee, Vice Chair Gagné and Supervisor Smith, met to discuss avenues in which to adjust the proposal. We did evaluate three potential sites and believe that this would be an appropriate location for a project of this type. The SAC reviewed the proposal and recommended approval at their meeting on December twenty-second, and the proposal, the proposed project was reviewed by the Park and Recreation Board at their meeting on January eighteenth, who also recommended approval of the proposal. There were a few changes documented, that is, before the board this evening, that we want to discuss with the Park and Recreation Board, and these primarily can pertain to mulching recommendations that were received by the SAC and are noted in the document. These do not change the overall scope of what was reviewed by the Park and Recreation Board. Additionally, the SAC is working on a letter to proprietors in the area to let support them of the project. So we think that this would be very good, well, a very good project, and we have Park and Recreation Board, they are very excited about, about this proposal. And Mr. Alexander, the Chair of the SAC, is here to answer any questions that the board may have.
So today, it looks like it's just a mowed area, grass. Is it fenced in or fenced, I know there's some fencing around it.
There's some fencing around the storm, there's a stormwater basin in the center there, and there is some fencing in that area, but the area that will be planted, I don't believe there is any fencing at this time.
And the homeowners who would be notified is Trifal Lane and. And the homeowners who would be notified is Trafalgar Lane and is it Mayfair Court? I think it's up there, right? That circle?
That's correct.
So just just a local.
That's correct.
If they want to participate in the Arbor Day events and also future watering, if they want to participate in that, because there is no source of water there, so we're going to have a tank of some sort, a barrel, a five gallon drum, something will be placed by Public Works Department. And then little buckets there, some type of pouring spout so that we can hold water.
Yeah, this is a really good game plan already in place. I was impressed with the amount of thinking that's gone into this. It's like, wow, this is a full ready-to-go project.
Very impressive, yeah.
But we did it with it to be commended. Good job. Parks and Rec are on board. Good and supportive.
Very much so.
The trees are it?
Yeah.
Yes, and the trees are free of cost.
So there's like three different types, right? There's full story trees, smaller trees, and shrubs. So in terms of planting, is it, is it kind of shrubs of the story that full trees, or is it all intermingled? How's it going to look?
Do you want to address that?
It's dispersed.
Dispersed?
Yes.
So on the day up, it'll be directed by SAC members to...
With gear protection.
Yeah.
We will, we will have gear protection.
That comes with the trees. I don't pay for that.
Okay. Sounds great. Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there any members of the public with a question or comment about this proposed project? Doug?
Is this park one of those leftover township open spaces from when that development was done?
It might have been. It was, yes.
So it is a township park?
Yes. And I believe there are amenities. And the reason we picked this side, please correct me if I'm wrong, the reason we picked this side was because there are a number of like playground amenities and other amenities on the other side, correct?
Yeah.
And you have a big old field.
Oh, okay. This is, this is the playground.
So this wouldn't, so we chose this location because it wouldn't impact any of the existing amenities that are there.
And that location is, is one hundred and twenty new planties in that one location?
Mm-hmm.
It's going to be pretty dense when it grows like that way.
That's the goal.
I hope it's able to survive.
Anytime you can add a tree, this is...
It is.
That was exactly what the Park and Recreation Board said.
Great, awesome, great project. Okay, so let's see. Looking for approval from the board? Is there a motion?
I'll second that.
So a motion is second to approve the proposed Arbor Day project for Hamlet Crest Park. Is there any final board or public comments or questions?
This will be happening on April twenty-ninth?
It's a Saturday after August.
Ready to take a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes four zero. Thanks, Hannah. Next is item number ten, discussion of possible approval of an easement agreement between West Goshen Township and Premier A Two Westchester P A L L C for maintenance to the historic Weeping Beach Tree on Old Fern Hill Road.
Mr. Chairman, before the board this evening is consideration to approve the easement between the township and Premier A Two Westchester P A L L C, which would permit the township to maintain the historic Weeping Beach Tree on the property that they own on Old Fern Hill Road. Securing the easement has been a project of the Sustainability Advisory Committee, and the property owner has worked well with the township to allow us to complete maintenance when needed. For example, we did maintenance in December that was approved by the board, and the property owner was excellent to work with. The purpose of this easement would be to provide access to the township in the event that the property was ever sold. The property owner has, please be advised that the property owner has approved the easement, this is before the board this evening, but we're still awaiting a signed copy. And the Sustainability Advisory Committee did review this document and recommended approval of the easement at their meeting on June twenty-fourth.
And I do realize you didn't get a copy of the, so that has to be attached, which generally outlines the area of the easement.
So what is your, how you access?
Yeah, Brian, you prepared this, correct? We probably want to extend it so that you do get the access coming off of the road.
That was something we weren't nothing sure of because of if there was, when you and I talked about it, you were, you were looking to see if there was access already from that.
So is it, is it off this driveway that comes down?
Yeah, there's, there's, there's two gates in the fence off that driveway, but we just...
How did you get in in December?
We drove the driveway apart and looked at it. And the gates are right along the side of the driveway. I just don't, we don't know if it's, if the access to the driveway is fully public or if it's private driveway.
Well, it's not fully public. It's not country public, but as far as access to this lot, they have the right to utilize that driveway.
Okay. I should change that.
The access easement includes, agreement includes language?
The agreement, the agreement language includes the right to access it, but the plan does not show that. So that's what I'm saying. I need, we need to go back and have that plan drawn to point toward the access.
I can update that there.
Yeah.
I've sent you comments from a legal perspective relative to the language, should we call it H two, where it's a purpose of holding special events such as the Arbor Day ceremony. I think we should keep it general and take that out thoroughly in case there's other functions that are here and other examples in this type of...
The other thing is that the property owner, you know, wanted to understand what you meant by special events. That, that term is very broad, and we wanted to give him an example so that he understood special event didn't mean carnival at the Goshen Fair. And I'm being a little extreme with that example, but it was to more just, you know, again, special events is a very broad term. So it was to give them some assurance of what type of special event you're talking about, the use of their land.
Okay. And then the second thing I had after that was where the focus on the event is centered on viewing the tree. I just put in there on viewing and educational purposes for the tree, because we were going to use it for educational purposes, you know, on Arbor Day and kind of talking about the tree and history of it and various things.
Is there such, can I ask good enough to allow events like that, Chris, to know do you think we should include what you just said? I mean, such as it's an exclusionary to having an education?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I don't think they would stop. I think it's broad enough to allow what you just mentioned. So, I mean, if he hasn't signed the document yet, I'm happy to ask if you can add that. But if he's already signed it and it's in the mail, I need an original sign to be sent to me, which is what I requested him to do. So I just hesitate.
Yeah.
Have him have to go back and redo it. But if he hasn't signed it yet, I can reach out for him tomorrow.
I could imagine you have a problem with educational purposes.
No, I agree.
Sounds good. Any other board questions on the ordinance language, of the ordinance easement agreement? Is there any public comments or questions about this easement agreement? You?
That came to my attention some years ago. It was a Eagle Scout project to recognize the beach. Are the Scouts, for example, allowed to use that under this agreement? Allowed to use that for their purposes of...
Well, it's to Tina's point, if it was a scout educational access event or something like that, yes.
No, it's not, not an event, but rather they would be doing it as part of a meeting or part of a merit badge project.
No.
No.
It's only related to, it's related to township functions or operations. Now, that being said, I don't see if, you know, that you reached out to the property owner and wanted to do something to be granted individual permission. That's always a possibility.
I mean, I actually think, Perry, we're talking about allowing public access to the easement on limited occasions for the purpose of holding special events. Again, I didn't want to get too specific on what a special event was because I wanted to get some of that. And I think that, I don't disagree that if the Boy Scouts came to the township and said, hey, we'd like to do this, we could write to the property owner and say, under the terms of easement, this is what we're planning. We think it's allowed. Please confirm.
I'd like to make clear that it wouldn't be a Boy Scout project that they could do there, because we were hired a third party to take care of the denarcors, to take care of the tree, and various other things associated with that tree.
Well, don't say no tree, no the project is. Maybe the project helps you, right?
True.
But again, you'd have, you'd have to evaluate.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Under supervision of the Arbutir.
I think if you, the next few questions, the Scouts would have to come to the township with a request for what specifically they're looking to do, and then we would work through you. Work through us to see if that's acceptable for the property.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so, do you have a motion yet?
I know it's true.
So is there a motion by the board to approve the easement agreement between West Goshen Township and Premier A Two Westchester L L C?
Yes, I'll make that provision.
Okay, thank you, Tina. Thank you, actually. Again, Chris, this is with the intention that if it hasn't been signed...
Well, I have a challenge.
Any last chance for any final comments from the board or public? Very good. Ready to take a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition?
Yeah.
Is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes four zero. Next is item number eleven, agreement between West, sorry, discussion of possible approval of a three-year agreement between West Goshen Township and Invoq Inc., the immunologic software that the Township Coes Department. Chris?
Mr. Chairman, this came to our attention about the middle of last week. So before the board of supervisors this evening is a proposed three-year agreement between the township and Invoq Inc. This is for the township immunologic software that is utilized by the Coes Department. Township has utilized this software since two thousand and fourteen. Current annual cost is twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars annually for the software, which includes an annual maintenance payment of just under ninety-three hundred dollars and a monthly payment of two hundred and ninety dollars per month. The post contract would go to a monthly subscription model at one thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars per month for the years, which is approximately a thirty-nine percent annual price increase. We did speak with representatives from immunologic and would note the following to the board's consideration. The township currently has a perpetual license for this software purchased in two thousand and fourteen, and this contract will upgrade us to the next version, which is being discontinued from service in December, December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, so about almost three full calendar years away. The new monthly fee would include all services such as hosting, support, and platform costs. There would be no additional costs unless the township required, or required specialized power reports.
Chris, if you don't mind, is they, did they host services today on our system?
I...
Is it hosted or not hosted?
Yes, it's hosted or not hosted.
I believe it is. Jamie, is it hosted or not hosted? Do you know?
I'm unsure. Did I understand my question?
Does it run on their servers and hardware, or do we have?
We have.
Machines here at the township?
It runs on online.
It's, it's accessed through the web?
So we don't, we don't host it?
They host it. They host the data.
And what about the new agreement? It's not clear to me whether it's hosted or not hosted.
Since, since the agreement would include hosting, they, it would continue under the same arrangement. They would host the software, and we would access it through the web.
Okay.
So the new contract invoicing would begin March first, and they are transitioning their clients to subscription-based models. Moving to a subscription model will provide the township with access to the new version of the software coming forward, and the pricing would be consistent during all three years of the agreement. This cost increase outlined was not included in our two thousand and twenty-three budget because we did not have this information at the time. One thing that I think is important to note that the members of the Coes Department have advised myself and Jamie that this program is not always the most user-friendly. I think I'm putting that, is that correct, Jamie?
That's correct.
And it serves its purpose, and they can function with it, but there may be other, there may be better products out there to service the township. And if the board desires, we could continue the current calendar year under the current arrangement and evaluate other options in the future. That's the direction of the board.
Well, that sounds very logical to me.
Not to me.
Yeah.
Not to me at all. I think we should evaluate somebody now, and the question is not what this contract says.
That's what I'm saying.
Contract is, what I'm saying is we need to contract, concentrate on what the existing contract says versus the proposed one.
There's no existing contract.
We just say standard current year, one more year, read if it's acceptable.
If there's no contracts, this contract said, the proposed one says, when it expires, you can continue month-to-month under the ninety gauge in cancellation notice. If there's no contract, that's even better yet. Why can't we just start looking for another company now? Why are we waiting?
So if you don't stand, do you lose access to what's there?
It just continues month-to-month.
It just continues month-to-month.
Until we give them cancellation notice.
Correct.
And there's no periodic timeframe on the cancellation notice.
I don't know what that timeframe is off the top of my head, but we've had, Jamie and I have had numerous back and forth conversations with immunologic. My understanding is if we don't implement this now, we can continue under the current arrangement during the calendar, during the calendar year, and that would provide us with the opportunity to evaluate other options.
At the same rate.
At the same rate, yes.
Do we have a copy of that two thousand and fourteen contract?
We'd have to look.
We should probably get that.
Yep.
Yeah.
What's I saying? We're not going to close you off for access. You don't hear me?
That is not what they said in any of the court, any of the email correspondence that we've had.
Well, as I'm saying, we need to concentrate on what the existing contract is versus this proposed one.
Right, we're not getting, we're not getting a good response on what the existing contract says. We'll, we either need to track that down ourselves or, you know, be able to get a copy from them.
I think we need that.
And determine what that timeframe is for when we can cut.
Exactly.
Cut that contract off, but it will tell.
You can negotiate it right now. You can say, I want it twelve months and I, there is, we decide we want to cut it off.
I want twelve months. I'll give twelve months.
Because we need kind of values. Up to twelve months.
Up to.
Up to twelve months.
Continue here to evaluate.
We...
We certainly need some time to evaluate other companies and other offerings.
You evaluate their new offering too.
Yeah.
The contract is a different system. It's a direct, it's their updated system, which is not the same system we're currently using.
It might be, it might be a good problem.
It might be a better system. I don't know. But I can tell you from experience that it's usually four to six months to migrate from one permanent system to the other.
Okay, so we have a wait for what we're not approving three years tonight, and we will evaluate other options.
Yes.
Would you give the staff, you guys, to tell us what your kind of timeline is and that for, you know, what you want in terms of an extension, just so we can...
Are you going to put an R P out? Is that what you're going to do?
No, I just want some time to research other options.
There are a variety of programs of this type, and if you do a quarry with different municipalities, which you're going to find different programs that others utilize that we can evaluate.
It's like DocStar, similar to DocStar.
No, DocStar is more just a repository.
Okay.
Tracer?
Tracer.
Tracers, admins is one.
Just make sure that the hands like users are all involved with getting satisfied with what they want to, is the way to look at it. Great. Do we have anything else on that?
Mr. Chairman, if there's any other issues, we'll bring it back to the board.
Next is item twelve, discussion regarding zoning hearing board application submitted for eleven hundred Ashbridge Road for a dimensional variance. Jamie?
Yep. So eleven hundred Ashbridge Road is located in the R three residential zoning district. The applicant is seeking a dimensional variance for a deck located less than fifteen feet from their side property line, which is the required setback for a deck fifteen feet. Let's see that aerial. Oh, that's not the one. Yeah, Chris put a nice aerial up on the... So this will be before the zoning hearing board at their February meeting, which is February twenty-seventh, Monday, February twenty-seventh. We will also be issuing a decision and order up at meeting for Taylor's Farm, Taylor's Mall pump station, Taylor's Mall pump station. There's enough. Anyway, and then the decision and order were... And then the decision and order were 820 East Washington. Yep, that's it. And then we did also receive, yep, here's your aerial.
So the variance is between 1100 and the adjacent property onto the left there?
It is. Jamie, is the front of the house face Beatrix Pike? Where's the front of the house?
Yes.
Faces Ashbridge.
It faces Ashbridge, and the address is 1100. So the deck's off the side? Yes.
So the reason this is before the board this evening as opposed to the second meeting is because of the timing. Their second meeting of this month is February 21st, and zoning hearing board meets on February 27th. So if the board were to oppose the application, I would give a person adequate time much to prepare.
I think they're putting it off the back.
I know.
Yeah, it doesn't make any sense. Why do we have to walk from the side of the house?
Well, and so I'm, so what are they exactly asking for here? It's gonna go to, it's the neighbor's driveway.
There's 20, they're showing you that there's 20, around 23 feet.
I know, but how close is it where that line is? It's gonna be right by the, how far away from that driveway?
The deck is going to be 12 feet, so it'll be, it'll be 11 feet.
Half of that distance.
Pretty much half of that distance. Does it wrap around here already?
Do they have a hole?
Does it look like it from the aerial?
Does it wrap around the back at all?
Which does.
That's why this area is really hard.
It's not gonna come down.
Yeah, that one.
It's gonna be colored, it's gonna be.
So there's, there's a patio in the back. There's a patio back here already existing, but this is a fence that they have. They have like a fleet, and then they are choosing not to put it on their driveway, so the, it'll be located right here.
And around the back.
Does it come around the back?
Just on the side.
It's straight, it's a street deck, straight on the side of the house.
Just on the side.
But is it, does it extend beyond the building line?
Yes.
Okay, but it does not wrap around the back?
Nope.
Does anyone get to put a hole in their house to get to the deck?
You're gonna have to.
Then it'll walk out from that side of the house.
Do they have to have their neighbors' approval?
No, the neighbors can come at the party and oppose it. Right, their neighbors will be notified.
Yeah, so here's, so here's the floor plan. You can see that they're proposing a
A door.
Door on the side of the house out to the deck. It's on the door? And doesn't, well, speculate. And then steps on the backside of the deck down. This deck is probably elevated, this deck. By looking at that plan, it looks like the deck and, and they're saying here, the first 20 feet of it's enclosed and the last 23 feet is not, not covered.
It's not like a deck. It's like it's an addition.
Yeah.
It's a-
Outside addition.
Covered deck.
It's a covered deck. So we're gonna have it partially down the side and out the back, and then probably step down the patio to get my deck. It's gonna be in this here, obviously.
Covered porch.
We say a covered deck.
The covered deck.
There's no limit to the price.
We don't have any requirements for not putting things like that in the front yard? The side yard?
Yeah, your variance, the faculty needed variance. Yeah, you do have a requirement.
They came up with 15 feet of property to have.
Coming outside is coming.
And within 15 feet of property.
I would suggest that the CHP should evaluate this. That's what I feel the board needs to weigh in on this one, but it's just my opinion.
Yeah, I agree.
And the notifications will go out to everyone within five hundred, within a 500-foot radius of the project, sorry.
Yeah, so you can see down here, you can see how the deck overlaps the existing house and doesn't quite come to the front.
So it would be additional.
I had to ask why we have to leave, so we just keep on giving variances to these.
Or would the HPM not grant it, so?
Yeah, I agree. My feeling is we should oppose it.
Oh, you want to oppose it?
I would agree.
I mean, the CHP does review a lot of dimensional variance situations. What we have, what they're, what they're set to do, and they have the-
It's ultimately a question of the property owner, if they can prove a hardship that exists that would require this. If they can't prove the hardship, I mean, the thresholds are various, then it probably wouldn't be granted.
But that's not, that doesn't always happen. If property owners, if people don't come and oppose it, zoning hearing board sometimes says, well, nobody's opposing it, including the board.
True, true.
We're not gonna strictly apply this candidate. That happens all the time.
That's true.
I don't know whether they made a decision to oppose it or not tonight. We're just saying, let's go.
Well, we are.
You are, because you're saying.
That's why it's here. That's what we're expecting.
You are a party in every hearing. If you want to oppose it, you have to authorize somebody to come to the hearing and present evidence to show that they should not be granted.
I thought you'd go to the 21st of that side.
Then it doesn't come back.
It's a question of the back. And if you don't go, and they present their evidence, and no, no neighbors come to oppose it, zoning hearing board will again say, wow, even though they don't really prove a hardship, nobody opposes it, we'll grant it.
Yeah, I'm kind of living the John, everything's for a reason.
Why do we have witnesses? You know, certain setbacks. We're trying to create a community here and maintain the character of the community.
And continuity.
If there are those, there are those concerns, the board will meet on the 21st. Do you want to invite the applicant to do a presentation on the 21st?
I don't know if that's what the change is.
27.
And one of the things, like, what's happened the last times we've done this is that if Jamie indicates to the applicant that there's opposition from the board, it's not like we're gonna get approval, maybe we want to rethink the planning.
That's true.
It's a waste of the money to go. Really, and a lot of property owners don't know. I represented a property owner tomorrow with a contact, and they had absolutely no understanding of what a variance was or what their burden was. They showed up at a hearing and said, hey, we want to do this. And the zoning hearing board said, well, where is your proof of all these elements you have to prove? And they're like, what are you talking about? So I'm just pointing that out to say that sometimes property owners don't realize it's a judicial hearing, it's a process, they have a burden. And if there's somebody opposing it, then they're not likely to get their relief. So they might want to rethink. I mean, maybe there is a reason it can't be put in the back. You guys aren't being told that, you don't understand that.
We had another, we had that application on Lark Lane that we were going to invite to present this evening to the board. Jamie notified them about the presentation, they've stopped, so we withdrawn the application.
So maybe that's the way forward, is to ask them to come and present what this is about.
That'd be good.
At least give them a chance to say what it is and what they thought and why, you know, the questions we have, what answers they have.
And if after the presentation, the board still, the board ultimately decides to oppose the application, Chris, there is a copy of the application.
Yeah, there's not much to present other than to show that there isn't a hardship.
So invite them to come to the 21st meeting?
Steve, you have a comment?
Yeah, can we kind of go through this with the property owners?
Trevor, Trevor, exactly.
Yes.
That's one, too.
With the 15-foot setback in the old house and-
This is a little bit different because it's a little bit different because that dealt with projections into rear yards. This deals with a side yard setback. So just a slight variation.
But it's the same 15-foot setback, right?
Yes, that's correct. And also a different zoning, a different zoning that's here.
Now, if you would like the applicant here to come to our next meeting, having the next door neighbor there too.
Well, there'll be, there'll be a party to the, they will be notified of the hearing, of the zoning hearing board meeting-
On 27th?
On 27th, excuse me. And they would be eligible to be parties to the proceeding, so that would be where they would make their case.
Should we notify them that the board has asked this applicant to come?
That's what I was thinking.
Well, you haven't, you haven't done that in the past with any other application that you've asked anyone to present to, and I, that would kind of be singling this out, in my opinion.
Okay.
Mr. Wolman had a question.
Nick?
Just wondering, since they're putting a new roof on there, how would the water run up off the roof affect the neighbors around them?
Good question. Let's see what they have in mind.
Depending on the size of, depending on the size of the deck, or if they have to use smaller management.
The deck as proposed would qualify for a school more permit. So they would have to go through the permitting processes for a school more permit as well, if they get their variance.
And that's something that we can, that's something that we can make sure is brought to their attention at the next board meeting.
Very good.
There will be one other application as well on Monday, the 27th of February. We did receive this the day of deadline, basically. It's at 8:09 Joe Drive, so we, it wasn't able to get into your packet. It is for a variance for a pool in the front yard. It does sound really strange, but the property is a corner lot that is also on a cul-de-sac. And so the location is where a former pool was in the same location previously that had been filled in. And the, and the location is, in fact, what appears to be more of like a side yard, backyard, but because of the shape of the lot, it, you know, it fronts on, it's like all front. So it looks like it's, it is in technically the front yard. So we did send that around to the board, we will this week.
We will this week. Because I think you might, if I remember correctly, you hadn't fully reviewed everything.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we got it on Monday. We did not get this into your packet. But I did want to let you know that that will be shared this week.
Will you solicit feedback from the board individually?
Yeah, we would like, we would like your attention to that, just in preparation of, you know, re-discussing it on the 21st.
Okay.
Okay.
Give me a second, I'll show it to you from here.
It's a very strange lot. So exactly what do you want our feedback on in the next meeting regarding the project?
Just whatever else that was discussed.
You don't want a decision.
We can do it on the 21st.
Yep, just look at it prior to the 21st. Just didn't get a chance to review it this time.
Yeah, that's all.
That's all.
Here's an aerial of the property. This is the pool that was removed. This is an over aerial. The pool is over there. So-
And that's where the pool will be?
That's where the pool will be.
Will be located.
So front yard is Joe Drive, side yard is Joe Court, which is the cul-de-sac next to it. But it's still, but it's still been through the front yard by the board.
So what's to the left of that one, that's fancy, coordinates, so that the west, that of the pool, existing pool, is that still this grass area there?
This red line you see is-
Okay, so why not? There's a big area to the left of that existing pool.
This is, this is a big, this area here is wooded.
Okay.
Is there a fence around? Looks like there's a fence around that pool, right, obviously. Is that like a fourth fence?
They're required to have a fourth fence or ordinance.
The fence is gone as well, right now, right? The pool's been built in, the fence is gone.
Everything has been removed, and, and the pool location will be exactly the same as you see it in that aerial.
Okay. So do you want to discuss it tonight?
If you'd like to. This is, this is all the information I can give you. Besides hard copy.
So the board thoughts or comments about this proposed CHP application?
Is there, does this neighborhood have an HOA, you know?
No, I don't believe so. Why did they fill in the pool in the first bowl? I think it was a previous owner that, that filled in the pool. And then the new owners want to put the pool back in.
It's just interesting that that's considered front part, because it's clearly their back part.
Probably the ordinance is, it's anything that, that fronts on the, on the street.
Does this pool have a side yard?
The pool is, it's a-
Is a pool have a side yard?
Allowed in the back and side.
But it's not allowed in the front.
It's not allowed in the front yard, and that's why they have it for the variance.
So essentially, anytime you have a corner lot, and this is pretty standard, you have two front yards.
I don't have any.
Excuse me, Jamie?
Yes.
Is Joe Drive near, did it, Joy Lane or something?
It's in the R3 residential zoning district, and it's in the southern part of the township. That's a question.
Joe, so is that, is that the old Twin Bridges farm area?
Do you?
Before me. Joe Drive, it's her, okay. Not too far from the top.
Right across the street from Seawatch.
Okay.
Can I not say?
Right off of West Town Road, across from, I think that's Haberson.
Old West Town.
Right, Old West Town. Yeah, right off of West Town Road.
Do you have any comments, Doug?
That's it.
Just what?
The, the name of the street is very familiar. I guess I've been through by it many times. I just, you know, just curious.
Is the board's decision was neutral, though, you would oppose it?
Great, yeah.
Okay, next up then, is that it, Jamie?
That is it.
Okay, thank you. Next is agenda number 13, discussion on possible appointment of Tim McNally as an alternate member to Park and Recreation Board.
Mr. Chairman, before the board this evening is consideration of appointing Tim McNally as an alternate member to Park and Recreation Board. Park and Recreation Board previously had a second alternate member until January of 2022. That individual cannot continue due work commitments in the position that has been vacant since. Mr. McNally submitted the attached information before the board for consideration and was interviewed by the Park and Recreation Board at their meeting on January 18th. At the meeting, Park and Recreation Board voted unanimously to recommend this appointment as an alternate member. And if appointed, Mr. McNally would serve a term that expires in January of 2027.
Thank you, Chris.
Yes.
Is a board member ready to make a motion to appoint Mr. McNally as an alternate, alternate member to the Park and Recreation Board?
I'll see.
Thank you, Ashley. Thank you, John. So any questions, comments from either the board or the public? Very good. We're ready to take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes four zero. And number 14 on the agenda is approval of the bills to pay for the general fund, the sewer revenue fund, the waste recycling fund, the capital reserve fund. I'll make the motion to approve the bills to be paid from these funds through a second.
I just have some questions.
Okay, can we have a second, and we'll get into that? Thank you, Ashley. They have a motion to pay the bills. Questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a couple. I guess the brand you own is PCA, come to the can, so we not only have a monthly fee, but we have an annual fee just to have a contract with them at $3,147.
That's correct.
And then, second question I have is relative to-
Could you pay it in one key?
I don't know, is there a page number?
Should, should be a page number operating.
Oh, nine, okay.
Nine, okay.
Yeah, the sewer manhole riser, and I guess the ledger, there's other things. Why is that not a sewer budget?
Could you pay it in one?
Nine. Under roaming.
Like a regular wall sill.
Sewer manhole riser.
We normally use streets for sewer, as covered with dirt.
Yeah, that's like $4,670. Oh, and your road maintenance, if that would be part of it. Is that why, because it's on the road maintenance, that would be part of the township?
That's getting ready for the paper.
Even though it's, okay. And then the last one I have is hiccup.
Could you pay it?
That's 10, H10. Dog bag, $2,195 is for dog bags. Is that an annual fee, or is that, I'm just curious?
They usually order a bus here.
Well, so it's an annual fee.
Yeah, sometimes, you tell the other year, you might need some.
Okay, I just-
Depends on, depends on how active people are walking their dogs on the leash.
I was wondering, spread the lies.
Is there a, is there a dog bag locations of all the parks, or is it, that some don't have them?
Some don't, the bigger ones do.
Any other questions, comments on bills to be paid?
Yeah, just a couple. Who provides internet services in Verizon or Comcast?
Oh, it's actually both.
Yeah, depending where it is. No, we have a backup line. If we drop Verizon, it automatically switches to Comcast.
So Verizon has an outage, then we have backup for Comcast. So Verizon has an outage, then we have backup for Comcast.
Is there a primary and a secondary, it'll, is like, is it always Verizon, Comcast?
It's, it's usually always Verizon, but Comcast is packed.
So when we pay, so we pay for Verizon, of course, for full calls, we pay the same for Comcast as well?
Yes, we have the same service because of PD, you know, you can't be out of service.
Okay. Next question, Verizon Wireless got items here for jet packs and air cords, just curious, what are, what are that?
Those are for, we have, jet packs are like mobile hotspots and that's where they're over the code enforcement department when they're in the field.
So you keep, those carrying their, or now, your trucks or something like that?
Correct. I believe we only have a handful of that.
Yeah, I have one, Mike has another.
And then there's a charge here on 77539 for police internet. Now, that's separate from Comcast and Verizon?
That, I don't know, that I can't answer.
Police internet account for November and December of last year.
That could be the logo for the cars, but I don't know.
I have to check on that.
And any other thing I wanted to mention, well, we got the Ford Ranger Lightning for the detectives and had an opportunity to take a ride, it's a pretty impressive vehicle, 61 grand, but.
Have they got all the gear in there?
No, not yet, they haven't suited it up yet, but it's pretty, pretty impressive vehicle.
I do think, even when it's out, that I actually think it's becoming less than what we had purchased it for. We bought it at 67.5 for the vehicle, plus outfit.
Henry's flat, but he'd done a, I asked him to do an analysis of the total cost of ownership between an EV and a, you know, a comparable vehicle. He looked at, you know, the purchase cost, the fuel versus electric cost, expected cost of maintenance, et cetera, and, you know, it wasn't, some of them showed as savings, it wasn't massive savings, but it was certainly comparable, given all the other benefits of an EV, you know, makes sense.
Yeah.
So we have, if anyone's interested in the public, we have an analysis that I have to share with you. Okay, is there any public comments or questions on bills to be paid? I'm sorry, John, do you have any more?
No, no, I'm good.
Very good, we're ready to take a vote. All in favor of paying the bills, say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Motion passes 4-0. Motion to adjourn the meeting, through a second.
I do have a question.
You, you have a question on the bills?[1693.62]